Change of all comments.
Here.
Council members Robinson.
Here.
Power.
Here.
Monday.
Here.
Change of all comments.
There, Council members Robinson.
Here.
Power.
Here.
Monday.
Here.
Do I have a motion tonight to adopt tonight's agenda?
I think that motion matters.
About a second?
A second.
Councilor Robinson makes it first. All papers say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. And who has tonight's consent agenda? Do I have a motion to adopt that makes a consent agenda?
I'll make the motion.
Councilor Robinson makes a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Councilor Power makes a second. All papers say aye.
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 Motion carries. Any other to the public? Jenny? I take it all you people are here for this detailed situation here on the docket, right?
Correct.
Okay. Because what I'm going to do here, when I was brought this point up to the councilman, the councilman Robinson, I'm going to switch I to B and put it on front. So you guys don't have to sit around waiting for us.
But you will understand.
You can say it. But I think we're going to move that item up. So he is going to become the mayor. We would have named him all along. So on that, we're going to talk about car detailing and interuse permit IUP. Resolution 2023-05 approving a home extended business interuse permit for a car detailing business app at 5620 Ambassador Boulevard in conditions of finding as present by now.
Yes. Mayor Council reporting tonight is a request for an IUP or an interuse permit at 5620 Ambassador Boulevard. This site is roughly three and a half acres located along Ambassador Boulevard outside of the city's urban service area. As you'll see, Seeley Brook above the property on the southern side of the site. There is an existing home as well as a detached garage that are on the property today. The property owners have requested an interim use permit for a home extended business. This property is guided and zone for rural residential use. As you'll see from the map, this is similar to what the other properties in the area are planned for. So a home extended business is a home occupation that takes place in a detached accessory structure. This type of use is allowed as an interim use in the rural residential district. And the applicants are proposing to use the existing detached garage for the business. The applicants are proposing a car detailing business. And this would include washing of vehicles, vacuuming, steaming, waxing, just kind of generally cleaning the vehicles. So car repair is not something that's included in this request. And the applicants have indicated that they would be cleaning two to four vehicles per day and operating between 9:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m. Monday through Friday. There would be two employees in the business. One would be one of the property owners and then another would be coming from off-site. There are two existing access points onto Ambassador from this property today. Both of them are gravel driveways. Because Ambassador's County Road, we sent this to the county for review. And their comment was that they would prefer that the driveways be combined. However, that's not possible, you know, they understand. With the topography of the site, it doesn't make sense to combine these driveways. So staff's not recommending that the driveways be combined. However, they are recommending that the driveway that's used for the detached accessory garage be paved and brought up to code. So code currently requires that if you have a driveway out of the page street, that driveway needs to be paved at least for the first 50 feet. Talking a little bit about parking, the applicant has indicated that the typical practice for this business is for the vehicle, for the employees to pick up the vehicles off-site, bring them back, detail them, and then drop them off again off-site. So there's not a lot of parking associated with this use. If customers were to come, it would be required that they come by appointment only. There is an existing gravel parking area for three vehicles that's located near the garage today. So that would be the area that would be used for parking for the business. There are three locations that were identified for exterior lighting on the accessory garage. Two are on the west side of the garage, and that is on the side that is further away from the neighboring property line. And then there is one garage that would replace the existing pole light on the north side of the garage. So the applicants are proposing to remove the pole and bring that light underneath, so lower it. And then any lights that are associated with this business would need to be city code. This site, again, it's outside the city's urban service area. It's served by private separate wealth. The applicant is proposing to add a separate holding tank, which would handle all of the wastewater that would be from the washing of the cars related to the business. So that will require a permit from the city. And that's a separate process, but that permit would need to be obtained prior to any car washing activity on the site. So Planning Commission held a public hearing in January and reviewed this case. There was, it was a well-attended meeting. There was public comments from both people for the request and people against. Some of the concerns that were brought up were traffic, safety, and then the idea that commercial uses belong in commercial areas. Other people who were supportive of the request stressed that, you know, the importance of small businesses, both to just residents in general as well as to the city, and how that helps the entire economic well-being of the city, having places where small businesses can start and then eventually potentially grow into larger businesses. Planning Commission discussed those points. We also talked a little bit about what would happen if the conditions of an interim use permit were not met. So we discussed the idea that that's a complaint basis, and then the city would follow through, try to get the applicants to comply with whatever is not being met. And if, if for some reason that wouldn't work, then we could go through a process to revoke that permit if that's ever needed. So after all that discussion, Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of the IUP request. And so tonight, City Council is asked to take action and move to approve, deny, or table the request. Are there any questions for me?
All right, thank you, Beth. Two driveways on the slot. I take it one goes over the house and one goes to the superior level.
That's correct.
Is this business, is this brand new or has this been played before?
So Mayor Council, this is a business that has been occurring in the city, but not at this site. So the property owners moved, and that's when it was brought to staff's attention.
So before, were they on a commercial site before?
Yes, they were on a commercial property, but I don't think that staff was aware of any permit or any use happening.
Right, so now they're moving to their residential lot, which is asking for IUP to run the business. And the amount of cars they saw between two and four a day, that is written in the IUP?
That is correct, yep. It's capped at a maximum of four per day.
And then, as we stated earlier, if he complies or there's a situation where he's not complying, you give the ability to him to comply, but not be revoked.
Correct.
So there's something here, like, does he charge you six cars or 10 cars a day?
So if that were ever to come to staff's attention, then we would take steps to get the property owner to comply. If that doesn't work, then we would go through a process to revoke. Those steps would be the steps that are typically completed through the coded enforcement process. So the notice application and notification.
But, but holding them is possible for staying within the IUP?
Yep.
That's important. I share your comments, Melissa.
Well, I did attend the planning meeting to get some additional information on this all. I heard their discussion, reading this and talking with staff, I feel confident that this is completely reasonable.
Okay, Rob, your thoughts?
My biggest concern for residential IUP, bringing the driveway down to the asphalt and then to make sure that we have a parking number of spaces for a business. Do all of those problems present themselves in a IUP versus a traditional commercial parking space elements?
As far as the parking lot drainage or?
As far as part, how many spaces need to be there? Does it need to have a handicap spot?
Sure.
You know, all the things that go along with commercial, we're trying to do on a residential. So I hear the asphalt driveway. I hear maybe or even not a pad for asphalt parking. Well, there were those standards when we do an IUP. Can be more flexible than that.
Yep, so Mayor Council, there are not specific standards for a home extended business for parking. That's because the home extended business can be a number of different things, some of which may require more parking than others. So that is something that you have some flexibility on with the IUP.
So in this case, where does that lie? I mean, you're just a speeded gravel event?
So, so right now, what's being proposed is the existing gravel pad that sits three vehicles. So, and staff feels that that's appropriate. So no, no changes to that are.
Right, and then, so you have a question I have for you, by the way, is for Attorney Kevin, is, you know, parking, you know, I mean, people coming, the cars are delivered, right, you're saying?
For the most part, they are.
So as you weather my current bad play like that, what's raining, and I'm gravel, I can't want to get detailed cars I just spent hundreds of dollars on, on a gravel road to get out to the asphalt, so it should be delivered. I mean, I'm just thinking, I'm thinking to myself, I spent $300, I did the vehicle, and they drove it out on gravel road after raining. I'd be killed. So, what do we do in that case?
So Mayor Council, that's certainly something that if the applicant wants to pave the entire driveway, they are certainly welcome to. But our code only requires it to be paved for that first 50 feet, so that's what we're driving.
Right, but again, an amount of traffic, I mean, people either deliver the cars or people could kind of pick up their car, or the other way.
So where they go to a site to pick them up? Right, so primarily, what is happening with this business is that the employee is going to a site, picking up a vehicle, bringing it back, detailing it, and then bringing it back off-site.
So the person's house or his job or whatever is a person, whatever. And then you give it and bring it back to that. So my, my point, I guess, for the audience too, by the way, is the concern is the amount of traffic. We're going to be able to do two to four cars a day on Monday through Friday, and that's great, five days a week, and if they're delivered off-site and picked up off-site, there really is no storage needed at that point.
You answered my question about the first 50 feet of pavement. I was going to say, if they had to pave the entire driveway, that'd be a bummer. I think if they wanted to, they're going to spend the time and money, have a sewer system drawn up and actually installed, that's a considerable amount of money. As far as groundwater and waste, that's good. As far as the driveway, that's really probably between the detailing and the customer, but you can get that reasite of concrete as well as asphalt. It doesn't cause a much degree, but again, when you lose a product, it better be nice to come in and they brought it in, so I get it. Like somebody else else said, if this was a daycare, there'd be a lot more fluid crap coming and going. It's a busy road already, it's got a history of being busy. I don't, I didn't, I believe under the planning and zoning, so I was there during some of the testimony as well, so. I think, again, the city, which has the upper hand, we can shut it down if you're not, you know, if they're not following the rules, that's in any business in town, whether they're commercial or otherwise. If they don't stay within the balance of the agreement, you know, we can make some changes pretty quickly. So I don't see a problem, long as the, you know, they follow the letter of the ordinance. And we encourage people to come here. We encourage small business, and it creates commerce, and like I said, things do grow out of home businesses and turn into something bigger, so I don't have a problem with it.
And as you stated, Eric Chetson Bell is on the place.
Yes, sir.
All I'll like to be should be helped with the recommendations of all occasions of the IUP. All right, that's comments from council, so now we're going to get comments from the public. Anyone wish to come up, talk, give their name and address, and speak, or vote for the vote. Up to you, people. Roll fight.
All right, I'm Beth Hubbard. We live next door, 5632 Ambassador Boulevard. We've, you know, had a lot of communication with them about it, you know, giving him the opportunity, with them the opportunity to have a home-based business, they, you know, so he can make a living. We, we know how it would run. We're right next door. We don't hear any noises if they were having any. And we just wanted to let you know that we're in agreement with them having it there, being a next-door neighbor.
Well, that helps us, and I appreciate you coming forward.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else want to come forward? Okay. Give me the attorney.
We've been there, we know best. 23263 Ambassador Boulevard. I don't know, just as a small business owner and just doing construction, I have a lot of charges, you know, and stuff like that, and I keep, I make a lot of noise listening and whatnot, but I just, just as a small business owner, I think, I don't think he's, you know, once he does get bigger, you know, then he can move to a commercial area, you know. But I think, as I said last time, the American dream is to start a business and move forward, you know, so. Bobs, I think.
Thank you. I just want to also put out to the public, you know, our code compliance is done on anonymous calls. You don't have to give your name and address, something like that. You get this call, they get a complaint. If you, if you help us to help, you'll monitor the area. If you start seeing something over the month, down the road, that four cars turn into eight cars or 10 cars or whatever, the traffic becomes way too much, then you call code compliance in our city. Talk to Jody Stephens and our resource officer, Lyle Herms, and they'll go out and check it out, and we'll go from there. And we'll put them back in compliance, or we will revoke the IUP. This council is very much adamant against that. If you have an IUP, you must follow the requirements and then the stipulations of the IUP. That's why you got it. Can't deviate off that. You have to follow. So help us to help yourselves, make the area what it is. I'm all for small business, I've been a small business owner all my whole life, and I'm all for that, but at the same time, there are rules that are required, and learning to live in a neighborhood that you're in. He's a neighbor of you too, so neighborhoods are made by neighbors. That's how it works. So I just point that out to you, then, you have that ability to help us, help you, make it better and keep it better, okay? All right. So I have a motion to adopt the car detailing and interuse permit IUP, Resolution 2023-05 approving a home extended business interuse permit for car detailing business at 5620 Ambassador Boulevard in conditions of finding as present by staff. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion, ma'am.
Councilor Robinson makes a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Councilor Power makes a second. All right, any further discussion? We have this as a resolution, so all papers say aye?
Aye.
Both, motion carries. Thank you, everybody. Appreciate that. I think I don't want to state the rest of the. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm staying on this moment.
All right, moving on to IUP. Of the, the, St. Francis Church, Chamber of Commerce parade permit.
Mayor Council, reporting tonight is an application for a parade permit during the Pioneer Days Parade. The Pioneer Days is expected to be, like always, on the first weekend of June, and the parade to be on Saturday, if we can start a new. Due this year, the Chamber of Commerce is presenting a route that is further east in the city, and that is in large part due to safety concerns and also cost concerns of the cheaper too. And also, the Chamber believes that this route will help with the logistics of the site too, in terms of lineup and then that's here on the parade. Michelle Anderson is here tonight as a representative of the Chamber and is open to any questions as am I. And also, when discussing this permit, it has been discussed among the other city staff as well, including Todd and Dave and Paul as well. Any questions you may have, we're open to them.
All right, questions, they obviously have done the homework and figured out what their route. Michelle has something to say, so.
I have nothing. The thing I brought you tonight, just that's the same exact route that what we have, it's just we added a few more details to, because we were trying to figure out how many people we were going to need for road closures. Well, obviously, where the red and white road closure sign is, that's going to probably need to be somebody from the police department or, you know, somebody that is trained. But the other spots, we are hoping we can just have volunteers with the safety vest on that know what they're doing. And then where the red cross is, I think this was Dave's idea to stage emergency medical vehicle there, or just somebody that has the equipment that would be needed. So if there is something on the route that needs to be, somebody needs assistance right away, that person could get there pretty easily. Yeah, this is, this was what we could come up with to avoid Bridge Street.
Right, and all those buses that Colette just mentioned. Dave and public workers and guy, you're all right with this? The reason, the slice thinking with this? All right, good. Thank you. All right, any comments, sir?
I'm just expecting you to have a great day.
Me too.
Um, Riley, I haven't listened to this.
Well, you will then be getting a very nice letter in the mail with excitement and great coming to your neighborhood.
And I'm not opposed to it. My concern is we, we have this desire to build St. Francis' Bridge Street corridor and to take the parade and throw that without bringing food count. I don't know, I'm, I'm a little concerned about, could we use the school parking lot per setup and have the parade go in the opposite direction on Bridge Street? Where are we going to have all the fun that we usually have in the morning? Bed races?
At your house, you're on the road.
Is the school on board with clearing that parking lot and having all those activities there? Are we going to have, you know, food trucks and vendors and things like that that want to set up and enjoy the day, so we kind of pull everyone down to the end of the parade route? You know, I know they have the little turnaround area, but how are we?
So this was actually one of our biggest concerns, because we are spending all this money to have the carnival on this side of town. As you all know, St. Francis is divided. No matter what way you want to look at it, you're either on that side of the river or you're on that side of the river. That's, that's just how it is. Now with Dollar General there, I'm on that side of the river, I'm actually Oprah, but with Dollar General, like my little quick stops, I don't even come all the way over to County Market anymore. So I mean, we are very divided, and that was a big concern, because where we make our money for the Chamber, that helps pay for all of these events, and the other things that we do is coming from the carnival. The parade does not make us any money. The parade costs us money. So that was our number one conversation that we had, is how can we make this work? Something that somebody brought up is, a lot of times, people on that side of the town don't really feel involved in Pioneer Days, because it's on the other side of town. They can't walk to any of the events, they can't, you know, they can see the fireworks from their place, but they're not, they're not really involved. Getting people from here to that side of town afterwards, after the parade, before the parade, the things before the parade in the morning, the bingo, the stuff that the Lions do, a lot of that stuff has been eliminated. They're not doing that kind of stuff anymore. The bed races, bed races, I think, was like 2014 was the last bed race that we could find on our records. We don't have the volunteers to run a lot of those events. And, you know, inside of the fire department, they used to do the bingo and stuff, they're not doing that anymore. One of the benefits to this is the Lions might be able to do some things at the Legion. They might do breakfast at the Legion. People can park there, then they can eat breakfast at the Legion, or maybe Tasty's will do something too. And then they can walk to the parade route. This route actually has more available non-street parking than what the old route had, because the old route didn't really have any parking lots on it. This one actually has better parking, safer parking. As far as food trucks, we did talk a little bit about that. We are not going to encourage food trucks coming down. We may do a couple of small vendors, like maybe a Boy Scout troop to sell pop and water. You know, a few like walking vendors that are through the parade, but that's it. We're not going to, we had talked about maybe doing, talking to open box fires about doing a couple food trucks there, but our concern is the foot traffic, and so we're going to, just going to avoid that. But what we are going to do is some of the vendors that will be at the carnival, such as the petting zoo, other things that are going on, will be advertised at the parade. So the petting zoo will have a unit that will go through, where they might walk through with holding a bunny and saying, oh, come to the community park after and pet the bunny. So to try to make sure that everybody knows, the fun continues to happen, you just need to go there. But yeah, that, that has been a big concern, but we won't know until we try. You know, if, if, will it bring more people to Community Park? Because, oh my gosh, look, Bob, there's a petting zoo. We can go see that bunny some more, you know? We can hand out coupons, we can hand out ride coupons. There's a lot of things that we can do during the parade to encourage people to come that direction. So, and that's what we'll try, and if it doesn't work, we can't, we don't know until we try.
But I like the parade route. I too would like the parade route to start at the elementary school and come, maybe in reverse order, in, in the high school. So it comes all the way through Bridge Street.
Sure, I'll let Dave and Todd answer that for you.
Sure, well, so we had some concerns when this route was originally brought to us, and I think we sorted most of those out. You know, some of the concerns with the original, the previous route, where it did, and beyond entry and a number of them streets were shut down, because you're there at Ambassador, it just seemed to create, from my perspective anyway, it seemed to create a lot of congestion, pedestrian traffic crossing 47, and that was one of the big concerns. Especially Patterson, for obvious reasons, we used to have to have at least four bridge routes there just to hit people. So that is the, the main benefit that I brought up this far, is shifting this route a little further on 57. Using some of that traffic on that side street, allowing people to get in and out a little easier. And this, this route has a lot of good access type for it.
Yes, it does. I live on, so, no, I'm not opposed, but, you know.
No, I appreciate your question.
I want Pioneer Days to grow back into the heydays than it used to be. So, you know, but we are always flexible, so we'll see what the outcome of this route changes in the public game, but if they're pro to it, you continue with it, not adjust. That's, that's the only thing I can think of. Can't put anything on vision, stone. The other route worked, but then there's another side of the city we're not getting to, so we should do that. That's a pro, especially where it hasn't been for quite a while. Put it back in that way. It's an emergency back in that because it's going to break.
Yeah, 2019 was the last break, so. And, and we know we're going to have people who are going to stay. And, and we know we're going to have people who are going to say, oh, this is awful, this is terrible, this is that. But, but we're not ever going to make anybody happy, everybody happy. And we really want to focus on kind of the small town feel parade. And I think bringing it through a neighborhood, it's going to bring a lot of that too and then pulling the school into it. The school has approved all of this. Chris Lindquist, Carson Anderson. They've, everything's been approved from the school perspective. In fact, the school is very excited about it. Their band does not have to get a bus. It's going to save the school money. It's going to really encourage a lot more of the nonprofit groups from the school to participate in it. And the school, and they talked to us about this. I talked to Chris Wears, who was in charge of, maintenance, in charge of everything. I was going to say, but that's not the right word. And they realized that there are going to be some cleanup, some setup, some things that they're going to have to participate in and they are all on board with us, so.
All right.
Well, first of all, if the frontline guys, police fire, public workers in charge have given them okay, I think it's awesome. The safety's already improved and I also want to thank Michelle for her enthusiasm and energy that she's bringing with this. This is awesome. And before there was nothing, now we have something or something, you know, would you say 2018 was the last one?
2019.
Nineteen, so there'll be some bugs and kinks coming to work out and stuff, but again, I remember four years ago when I was knocking doors, the entire 12 to 14, 15 houses, they, they were blocking out their own street, having street parties during pioneer days. The kids were in the middle of the street playing, the parents had lawn trills out, people were coming together. It was like a 19 night on steroids. So it really did a good job. So I, I'm for it. It'll create some enthusiasm and your brother took really good points about east side, west side of 47 or the river, whatever you want to call it. But yeah, the green was saved together because I think some of the people on the east side don't go to Central Park because they just don't get over this far. Like you said, the borderline stuff, maybe on night deal or even nine. So no, I, I think it's a fantastic deal and you gotta give it a chance.
I just met, I just talked to a lady recently, last month, lived here for years, who doesn't know where this fucking place is. For that time. All right, I think I, I myself, I put it to a vote here and all that, but again, I think it's, it's a change, it's new. It's been done, done for four years. It's still change, or change is always going to be accepted two ways. One, you like it, one, I don't like it. And we're not, we're people pleasing business. We're not that. We, our, our object is to try to invest by the city at large, not just one faction or another. So this is, I appreciate your work there.
You bet.
So on that, I have a motion to adopt St. Francis' Day Chamber of Commerce Parade Permit. A motion. I'm going to raise a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
House of Lords makes a second. I'll hear you say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on to item C now, we need ordinance amendment, heart commission. Ordinance 303 of Atlantic City Code Check 2, Section 4-3.
Yes, Mayor and Council, for you tonight is a requested first reading for an updated ordinance for our commission. We just spoke about this in a work session and discussed a few ideas to clean up our existing code. Some of the ideas presented would be to drop the commission from seven to five members, to have them stagger for two-year terms. And then we also included the part commission to meet quarterly versus monthly. And then increased the number of duties and clarified some of the responsibilities that we had, just cleaning up language. With that, in your packet is a red line version and a draft copy. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Well, one question I came up with, I read it all. Our commission verified between types B and C as per one-year term or two-year terms. Because I read one-year term or two-years, or you're staggering ones and twos?
So Mayor and Council, so on the first term, what we do is stagger on, so when they expire, they're not all expiring at the same time. So when we start the new commission this year, we will have some that will expire with a one-year term and some that would expire with the two, so that way we're not ending up with all five of them expiring at the exact same time.
And then it'll go to two years.
And then it'll go to two years because of stuff.
That's my account. Kevin, yours?
I'm all for it. We've been talking about it for months and months and got to spare with the body to get it done, so I'm all for it.
All right, Rob?
Yeah, I am also all for it. We gotta start somewhere if we're going to improve our practice. So it's something that we've been lagging a little bit on.
Sarah?
Yeah, I'm totally for it. I have many people waiting to find out when our commission will be available, the body, so I have. Then people come to me saying, hey, how do I do it? Hey, I went to the city hall, they don't have ready, let me know. So, yeah.
That's a good thing.
Great, great response from, I think we're going to have quite a few people in the future, actually.
Something better to add, rather than participating. Okay, well, I have to have a motion to adopt a ordinance amendment, heart commission, ordinance 303 of Atlantic City Code Check 2, Section 4.3, do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion, Mayor.
House of Lords makes a motion. Do I have a second? I'll second. House of Lords makes a second. Here is the ordinance, it's a roll call vote.
Ms. Allen?
Aye.
Councilmembers Robinson?
Aye.
Huddick? Adam Power?
Aye.
All right, thank you very much. All right, item D now, resolution for the support of quarters of commerce funding, Resolution 2023-04, for the St. Francis City Council supporting corridors of commerce funding of Trump Highway TH47, St. Francis Boulevard Northwest, improvements project and authorization for staff to provide a letter of support.
Mayor and Council, the quarter tonight is the next step in our grant process for the quarter of commerce funding. With this next step, we reached out to all of the surrounding communities, the townships, the school district, and multiple businesses to collect these letters of support. With that, that will increase our points per se for this grant application. With that, as the applicant, we are required to put forth a resolution for support. And that is attached in the packet and I'm happy to answer any questions.
No, I very much supported this, very much. I mean, it's a good thing to do.
I'm all for it. More voices, the better, so.
Sarah?
Yep.
Well, I'm also in support of it. After four years of hard work, plus all the time of work that I have, the four years that we did, we're kind of this, it's nice to see something going forward in the direction that, uh, that we hope. And it can end up to be a real incentive to our city that agree. Anyway, all right, so I have a motion to adopt a resolution for the support of quarters of commerce funding, Resolution 2023-04 for the St. Francis City Council, supporting corridors of commerce funding to Trump Highway TH47, St. Francis Boulevard Northwest, improvements project and authorization for staff to provide a letter of support, do I have a motion?
I'm with that motion, Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Littman makes a motion, do I have a second?
A second.
All right, House of Lords, I'm going to give a second, very good. Okay, so resolutions, all voters say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, moving on to item E, 2022 core revisions, first read, ordinance 303-04, where amendments pertaining to principal accessory use specific standards of Division 6, use specific standards presented by staff to add, are they all on the same thing? Or are they separate? There'd be separate motions, there's separate ordinances. So do you want to explain them separately?
Yeah, Mayor Council, I'll present them all and then, and then.
Okay.
All right, Mayor Council, for you tonight are a number of different zoning code revisions. As you know, the code was revised and adopted in April 2021. Since that time, staff has tried to, for the end of the year, they've tried to collect any, any issues that we've noticed with the code over that past year, whether that be just new things coming up, new best practices that we want to keep relevant, or clarifications or issues that we've had with different inquiries and applications throughout the year. So that's where these housekeeping and amendments are coming from tonight. These were compiled over 2022 and we'd like to fix these and clarify them so that we can have a clearer 2023. So for you tonight are four different ordinances. One deals with definitions, another with principal and accessory uses specifically related to agriculture, another with new specific standards, and then another with development standards. So I'll go through all of them here. The first is for agriculture. So staff is looking to revise the different agricultural uses that are currently in the code. So currently there is a general agriculture use and then there is a hobby farm use. And both of those live in the principal uses table. But that gets a little bit confusing as we have people who have larger, larger acreage lots, maybe they have a house and they have a few acres that might be in farming or crops or animal raising or something like that. So staff is looking to really clarify that there is a general agriculture use that's principal. And that is, you know, all 40 acres or all 20 acres are in active agricultural use. And then there is an accessory agriculture use, which is where, you know, it's, it's part of a property, but it's not necessarily the principal in part of that property. Or it's not necessarily the entire, it's usually tied with the residence. So the general agriculture use is proposed to change from permitted to interim use in the urban reserve district. All the other districts stay the same. The accessory agriculture use, again, we're getting rid of that from the principal use table, moving into the accessory table. And that would be straight permitted in the two agricultural districts and then permitted with standards in urban reserve and for residential. So with that, we did create standards for each of those uses. Just as a reminder, those standards are only going to apply in areas where it's not street permitted. So the interim use permit is required or if it is permitted in standards, then those standards would apply. So existing agricultural uses are exempted from all of these standards. This would only impact new ones that come in after this, this code goes into effect. And really the idea is that new agricultural uses, specifically in areas where an interim use permit is required or permitted in standard, that those new uses need to mitigate their impacts on the surrounding neighbors. So it's done a number of different ways depending on the accessory agriculture in general. But that's the idea, is that if you're going to be a new agriculture use coming in, you need to mitigate when you're from a new age. Questions on that one before I move? There's quite a few.
No, I like interim. I like that a lot.
Good, well, I'll keep going and there's always time for more questions. The next piece here is the use specific standards. As you'll see, we've got five different uses that we are slightly modifying our standards for. The first is the single unit detached dwelling. So there's two changes here. The first is to be a little bit more specific about what type of metal roof is allowed for these dwellings. Instead of just saying a metal roof, now we're saying finished metal standing scene with concealed fasteners or better. And that is coming out of just hearing what other communities around St. Francis have been doing and just watching kind of general best practices, seems like we need to clean that up and clarify that a little bit. The second change here is talking about ropes for single unit dwellings, allowing them to be flat or pitched. This is something that was already approved and adopted by council, but it hasn't officially made its way into the publication about the city. So we wanted to keep that in there as a change that we realized that it needs to still, still be into, be into this.
So is the same thing we had in effect, but it has to have some creative flow to it?
Correct, yeah. No, none of the languages has changed since the last time the council adopted it. Yep. The next two here are related to accessory dwelling units, accessory structures. So for ADUs, staff wanted to clarify that any ADU that is within a detached accessory structure, the square footage of that ADU counts toward the allowable accessory structure square footage. So something that staff has already been doing as a policy, but we wanted to make sure it's there in the code. And then accessory structures, again, something that staff is already doing as a policy. But we wanted to specify that the small detached accessory structures, so less than 200 square feet, specify that those are required to obtain a zoning permit. So those don't need a building permit, but they do require a zoning permit. Make sure that they're placed correctly. Swimming pools, two changes here. First is to clarify that a building permit is required for larger swimming pools. So those ones that are greater than 24 inches in depth and those that exceed 5,000 gallons. And then the second change is related to just new changes in technology for swimming pools, allowing an automatic pool cover as an alternative to protective fencing. So right now the city requires a protective fence around pools. And as things have kind of changed, as technology has developed, we've been getting a fair amount of requests to just do this automatic pool cover instead. This is something that is standardized, so there is, there are requirements out there that we have for the automatic pool cover. And then the unlicensed operable vehicle. So this use has two different areas of the code where it is regulated. And staff wanted to try as much as possible to make sure that no areas don't conflict and that those weren't together. So the first change is that the definition for approved parking surface, rather than being located in two separate areas of the code, that is supposed to be pulled out and put just in the definitions area. And then the change in the use specific standard section is to allow properties which are less than nine acres in size, those are limited to a maximum of three recreational type vehicles. And then all of those vehicles need to be parked on an approved parking surface. And then the, the unlicensed operable vehicle is capped at one, maximum one for any property in the residential district. And then that needs to be parked according to the regulations in Hensett and the two, which is the other area that was changed. And that regulation is really just that if you are in the RR district, you are allowed to have a parking area for that unlicensed operable vehicle, which is an approved parking surface. So that includes everything from pavement, two minutes, as well as class five. So a little bit more flexibility, whereas in the R1, in the R2, the R3 districts, that parking surface needs to be two minutes concrete or papers, so no class five. Questions on those before I move? All right, and then development standards here. Steph has noticed over the last year that as we've gotten some more interest in non-residential buildings, that some kind of basic architectural standards may be helpful. So these include requirements for street facing side of the building. And the requirements would be facade articulation, so some sort of change in the building every 60 feet. And then windows installed at regular intervals along the length of the wall. So not specifying exactly what that interval needs to be, which is that there are some in general. And then landscaping, screening. This is an area of the code that staff is proposing to just repeal the entire thing and replace it. The existing code today is pretty onerous and there's not a lot of flexibility. So we have gone into the issue where certain, certain properties really aren't, aren't able to meet those requirements and it wouldn't really be necessary anywhere. So staff has come up with some new language, hopefully allowing some additional flexibility while still keeping the requirement that, you know, certain commercial or industrial uses are screened appropriately. So the new language talks about commercial and industrial uses are required to be screened when they abut a residential zone parcel, so when they share a property line. Not if they're located across the street, but when they share that property line. And the screening needs to be a minimum of 60 feet height at installation. And that screening can be anything from all vegetation, it can include a fence or a wall or some combination of all of those. If vegetation alone is going to be used to fill this freedom apartment, then it would require a mix of shrubs and coniferous trees. So there is a graphic that we created to help show this. So the trees are closer to the commercial or industrial building. And then as you move toward that property line that's shared with the residential, then you get some shrubs and a mix to help soften that line. If you're going to be using a fence or a wall in conjunction, in conjunction with some vegetation, the vegetation requirements may be reduced by up to 50%. And again, we would be requiring vegetation on the outside of the wall to soften that look. And then the other piece to note is that berms are limited to three feet in height. So in order to make that six-foot requirement, some vegetation would be needed on the top of that as well. So we do have some graphics that help show that. Sometimes a picture is worth quite a few more words, so. With that, planning commission reviewed this at Hall of Public hearing in January. They did request some modifications to the unlicensed operable vehicle language. So that is what we shared with you tonight, really trying to kind of match up if your driveway is gravel, you should be allowed to have a parking pad that's also gravel. And they, otherwise they recommend a unanimous group. So tonight we do have four ordinances for council action. I believe that's where else? Happy to answer questions.
All right, thank you, guys. One question I had here, you talked about one section here where it was about, they need to be. Where it was about, uh, they need to be approved for zoning but not for building. Right? So. Where does a building permit come in?
A building permit is required if it's greater than two hundred square feet in size.
Okay.
So basically if you go to Menards and you buy a shed and want to put it in your yard somewhere, then you would require zoning permit, maybe require a zoning permit to determine where you would put that shed, but seven hundred square feet, like you don't have to have a building permit.
Is that, that's something we didn't do? Or is that always been like that?
Uh, that is, my understanding we've been doing a zoning permit for.
No, I'm talking about no building permit, two hundred square feet. That new?
No, that is not new. That is in place across the state.
Really? So only above two hundred square feet you have to have a building permit? Yeah, I don't know. But you always do a zoning compliant. And I just want to cut out the public, anybody who's listening here, that, that all these ordinances are grandfathered in. So if you're not doing anything with your land, you're fine. Now, if you go forward with doing something, then you have to live under the zoning we're doing here. And, and I'm very much always pro clarification, creating areas of anything. You save yourself an argument with someone with a very downed soul. All right. On that, Sarah, your comments?
Um, I was over and I think that these changes are just, they're good. They're just kind of something that a little more for everybody to understand. It's a good change.
Okay, Rob. I, I agree with Sarah. I, I read the, the red stuff, then I read out the cross talk stuff. And it just makes more sense and it's better to understand it for, you know, a language person like myself. You guys are professionals, so I'm just leaning on you guys a little bit on this. And I kind of understand the two hundred square feet. The reason why you need a zoning is make sure you're so, so many people in the lot line versus, you know, dwelling. It just, it's more about placement, not building permits. So I kind of understood the two hundred square foot building. Yeah, I'm, I'm all on those. My only question is, do we have to do a complication for these after the last reading or?
Yep. So Mayor Council, this, all these ordinances need a second reading and then that will.
Yeah, that's it.
That's like, I really appreciate the passion you have for your work, because there's a lot of moves, so that needs to tease, cross, and ice dive. I'm very good. And thank you for taking into consideration the gravel, gravel for gravel instance for some people that are in existing surfaces and whatnot, so know it. And how do you choose your next assignment as far as housekeeping? When, when will that happen and how do you choose what to do?
Yeah, so Mayor Council, right now there's really, uh, for the housekeeping amendments, we will plan to do it again, you know, next November, December, staff gets together and kind of has a running list and we start to talk about which ones, based on whatever comes up this year. We start to talk about which ones we would like to, to bring forward. So, you know.
Is there a priority to the things that are seen more urgently? Is there urgency amongst?
These ones are not, you know, they're not high priority. If, if something comes up that really does need to be addressed, that will get brought forward separately. But these ones are just all kind of, you know, we've noticed them over the course of the year and as we have time, we would like to fix them.
Very good. Thank you for your work. It looks good.
Right. And another thing it does, by the way, is it keeps us up, up, up to date. So that is at times, the, the, the needs of the city change, we can change with those needs. In other words, something that's been stored twenty years ago doesn't have to stay twenty years later if your city is in a holding direction. Well, urban, whatever it may be. So I, I like, I like the clarification. I like, I, I don't, when someone comes to me with, with a, a discussion, an argument, whatever it may be, add your facts together. This way you have it written down on pretty self-explanatory. You have to read and understand it. If you have a question, that's a question. So bring it to me when it's on. Very good work. All right. Let's, let's go forward. Well, two hundred time. Right? All right, City Council, who to approve first reading or first? So I can just read the ordinance, right? Don't read that just like that and have any word.
The ordinance as presented.
Okay. All right. So do I have a motion to adopt ordinance three oh four first reading amendments pertaining to principal accessory use specific standards? Division six use specific standards as presented by staff travel motion. I'll make that motion.
And just to clarify, Mayor Council, sorry, that, that title in the agenda is incorrect. So it should be the amendments to division two rules and definitions.
Rule and definition, okay.
Dave? That's a friendly amendment there.
Is that good to go?
Yes, that's good to go.
All right, do you have a motion? Someone made a motion today?
I did.
Councilor Robinson makes a second.
Second.
Councilor Robinson makes a second. This is an ordinance, so it's a roll call. Jenny?
Councilmember Sathib?
Aye.
Bauer?
Aye.
Robinson?
Aye.
You're filling in.
Aye. Okay. Moving on to ordinance three oh five, do you have a motion to adopt, alright, ordinance three oh five amendments pertaining to agricultural uses in division four based zoning districts of the zoning code as presented by staff? Councilor Robinson makes a motion. Do you have a second? I'll figure it. Councilor Robinson makes a second. Get us an ordinance, we'll call again.
Mayor Feldman?
Aye.
Councilmember Bauer?
Aye.
Robinson?
Aye.
Sathib?
Aye.
Very good. Moving on to ordinance three oh six, we have a motion to adopt, two, three oh six amendments pertaining to principal accessory use specific standards in division six. Use that one as a standard presented by staff. Councilor Robinson makes that motion. Do you have a second? Okay. Councilor Robinson makes a second. Roll call. Jenny?
Mayor Feldman?
Aye.
Councilmember Bauer?
Aye.
Robinson?
Aye.
Sathib?
Aye.
All right. We're going on to one three oh seven. A motion to adopt, makes ordinance three oh seven, that has to change architecture standards. Budget requirements are required, screening division seven, the all-in standards of the city code as presented by staff travel motion. I'll make that motion. Councilor Robinson makes motion. Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Councilor Robinson makes a second. Jenny, roll call please.
Mayor Feldman?
Aye.
Councilmember Sathib?
Aye.
Bauer?
Aye.
Robinson?
Aye.
Very good, very good. Thank you for your work. That's pretty good. Now we're going to move on tonight to, last night, well, second. Two, three, five, four, three, regarding a certain conference and plan amendment. Resolution two thousand twenty-three national six, approving a conference and plan amendment to reguide the property ed. Two, three, five, oh, three, regarding a circle of northwestern parks, open space to high density, residential with additions and finds of that as presented by staff. To authorize and build on this amendment to the legislature, council, final review.
Mayor Council, according to my comprehensive plan amendment request for the property located at two, three, five, four, three, regarding a circle. This is a staff led request. There is no current plans for development or redevelopment. But this is an area that staff realized was dated for parks and open space in error as part of the two thousand twenty comprehensive plan. And as you can see on the screen, this is a two acre parcel that has three existing apartment buildings on it. So it's never intended to be flipped to park. So this was just a, a mistake as part of the comprehensive plan. So as we were doing the zoning map update in two thousand twenty-one, property owner, forward, and worked with staff to identify that this was discrepancy. As a result of that, the property was zoned R three by density to reflect its existing use. Understanding that as city staff had time, we would bring forward this comprehensive plan amendment so that the comp plan and the zoning are consistent with one another. So the amendment tonight is proposed to reguide this area to high density residential to reflect the existing use and its current zoning. So we did hold a public hearing at the planning commission meeting in January. There were a few members of the public that attended. Really just wanted clarification that there are no plans for development in this area at this time. They did know that there is some interest from the public in investing in Garner Park. So the Parks Commission is coming at a perfect time for interested citizens who live around the area. So with that, the planning commission did recommend approval of the amendment. And we suggested motion on the screen. Do you have any questions?
Okay. That looked pretty good to me, so. Thank you for your work on that one. Kevin, your comments on this one?
Oh, I, I was part of the, and I was participating in the meeting as well. And the three people that picked him up, we encouraged him to become, join the park commission. And we actually, I encouraged one of them to become a required to guard a park. Roots, I support you, and talk to your neighbor, give them one, and they're kind of trouble, but maybe he fits the punch. But no, I, I vote for it. It, this is pretty tender.
And it allows for flexibility in future, which is nice. So it's not rigid, but it allows some. Rob, your thoughts?
I'm, I'm for it. It's just an error that was made in the, we need to have a thing, so. Yeah, that's it. I agree. Sarah?
Stuff, some errors that we need to fix. Right, it's F N B two point seven.
Okay. Thank you. On that, do you have a motion to, to two, three, five, four, three, regarding a circle of conference and plan amendments? Resolution two thousand twenty-three national six, approving a comprehensive plan amendment to reguide the property at two, three, five, four, three, regarding a circle of northwestern parks, an open space to high density residential with conditions and finds of that as presented by staff. To authorize and build on this amendment to the legislature, final review. Fair motion. I'll make that motion. Councilor Robinson first, Councilor Robinson makes a second. Bring in a good discussion. Your resolution, all three say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Always very serious to me. Well, I have one thing here. I have a note here. I've got a note here. I'm not sure you understand, but if I go to page, let's just, let's put that, let's just see what I, what I remember. I had, I had page sixty-three, explain section ten dash seventy-one dash oh eight. And then building type of construction, it says here.
Oh, okay.
So I guess, I'm not even sure if my question was or not. As I correct this. Because I see it pretty well attached.
Yeah. So Mayor Council, this is the section that deals with building type of construction. So materials that are required for buildings in various districts. And then information about roofing and now information about architectural standards for non-residential buildings.
Right. And it talks about flat roof and this metal roof.
Uh, it, so that is actually in the use specific standards for single unit dwellings. So that's not here.
Okay, that's more about materials.
Correct.
All right. That's the first I've ever known of it. All right. Let's throw that away. Why, okay. All right. This is, this is becoming the case. For her area of, of, of calendar trees.
Now it's you.
You know what she wants, the last one. Because we have a work session. March twenty-seventh, April twenty-fourth, June twenty-sixth, all six o'clock. Two hours of public works facility, go to City Hall, we'll read the long-term financial plan, reach to the park, raise on, uh, our view. People turn to the personnel policy at City Hall. June twenty-sixth, we budget water sewer rate and a lot of the.
Yes. Mayor Council, that is the immediate dates I'm requesting. And I believe Councilmember Bauer asked for these to start at six o'clock. That's why the bond didn't affect their appointment. There, this is not by any means the only things you will see on those nights. Or the last meeting was either way requesting, so.
You're teasing them.
Yes.
The baby's with.
With that, I'd like to start here, so please work.
Okay, so let's, do these things work for you guys?
Let's just check the calendars. And so.
I was going to compliment Kate and say you said there were going to be a lot of them. Three line, I have pretty easy breathing, but now you're saying they're going to pack them, stack them.
Yeah.
That's her.
We have some pretty high level financial and personnel issues to get through this.
I'm going to talk to somebody with that. Holy shit.
All right. So for the first one, March twenty-seventh on a Monday, please public works. At six o'clock, is that good to go? Well, yes.
Yes.
All right, first one down. Second one is in April, April twenty-fourth. Okay, so that'll be a work session. That'll be at six o'clock, two at City Hall. Right?
Correct.
Everybody on board with that one?
Yeah.
Twenty-four, yeah. Okay, and then moving on to the last one here on June twenty-sixth. We can wait to see that one because summer's all over the world. That'll be at six o'clock at please public first.
Correct.
Right?
Yeah.
Everybody on board?
Yes.
Twenty-sixth doesn't work for me. Twenty-seventh does, the two thing. What about that Tuesday, everybody?
That works.
That works?
Yeah.
So let's go.
Mr. Mayor, I'll clear that out right now, so everyone knows March twentieth. I will be out of town, I'm sure. I shall still be in there. Driving the auto van, driving the auto van, I'm pretty sure they don't have the internet there. I'm just saying. It's not gonna happen at all. I believe that.
I'm pretty sure we can help you with that.
Sorry, so the twenty-second, Tuesday, is public work at six o'clock, right?
That works?
All right. I did have the, that's not the. All right. Needing over the public, anybody's hand? Nope? Okay. Um, we have two big reports to go to. So we're going to start with police.
Yeah, Mayor Council, I'll spread out, moving along fairly good here. In your package, you'll see the two thousand twenty-two annual report for the police department. And to some, all of the year was really a year of some challenges again. But really kind of showed the teamwork that our department had. We lost a few officers for various reasons. We were down a couple of officers for, for most of the year. But all in all, it felt like we really never slowed down. And most times it was business as usual and I feel like our staff pulled together and continued to serve this community in very high well. So in this report, like previous reports, we really tried to focus on department staff and their service to the community. Some of the roles they played and how they contribute to the department. These are the people who do their jobs day in and day out and provide month work and services to the city and really continue to make this department what it is. So all our officers and staff members are mentioned from the beginning of the report with each one of them bringing unique qualities to this department. And there's of course, complete veteran sergeant, who was involved with just about everything our department has to offer. Sergeant Larson, he wears a lot of hats in the department and you can read a little bit more about him in the report. We also recognize our records staff who perform a lot of day-to-day tasks, including processing reports, citation, gun permits, entering data in our RMS system, providing assistance to the public. They provide monthly order, annual stats for reports. They participate in coordinating community events amongst a lot of other tasks. They are truly essential to the day-to-day operation of the police department and we definitely could not function without them. Our patrol staff is obviously the most visible part of our department. Our officers work ten and twelve hour shifts. I am involved with approximately six thousand four hundred incidents in two thousand twenty-two, which is very similar, similar to the previous year. In addition to enforcing laws and responding to calls, a large portion of our patrol staff are involved in some fashion in our community outreach efforts. And the amount of officers that contribute to our community outreach efforts are truly extraordinary. And they perform tasks that are outside of their required duties. And I think this is where it kind of sets our department apart, a lot of our departments, just that participation. Also a big part of what officers do is training and two thousand twenty-two is really no different with a defined role of five hundred and forty degree training hours over the course of the year. And within our patrol staff, we have our field training officers or FTOs as we refer to. These officers hold the responsibility of training in our new officers. One of them was Officer Tam Penya who recently finished FTO and now on the road. These FTOs are, are so vital to the department and the development of our officers. They were very busy during two thousand twenty-two and they look to start this year with the training end up to additional officers. uh, with the training end up to additional officers, uh, so nothing really can be said about, um, what these field training officers do, and the amount of work that they've put into, and the responsibility that they take to make sure the officers are well-trained, uh, and ready to go. The department investigator was busy in two thousand twenty-two, being assigned one hundred and seven cases to investigate, uh, this is in addition to, uh, a lot of other duties, including writing and serving search warrants, signing criminal complaints, conducting background investigations, overseeing forfeiture processing, alcohol, tobacco compliance checks, and managing the evidence room. We also recognize our reserve officers, who continue to volunteer their time, uh, to assist the police department and serve this community, uh, they put in a lot of hours each year, assist with things like traffic controlling events, performing house checks and park patrols, assisting in community events, and assisting officers on shift with things like transports, and other areas where officers learn the systems. And so we truly respect and appreciate the hour and the time that these six reserve officers put in for our department, and, uh, last year they put in, uh, combined total one hundred ninety-eight dollars of volunteer help. The volunteer students. We added a second department chaplain in two thousand twenty-two, with both chaplains serving in that support hall, uh, when we, uh, and they just provide an outstanding service to, to the members of this community, and, and even our staff, uh, officers, or our staff members. Our annual statistics for two thousand twenty-two, as mentioned earlier, was similar in goal to that of the previous year at six thousand four hundred and twenty-seven, point point seven, uh, for two thousand twenty-two compared to six thousand five hundred and twenty-one, two thousand twenty-one. Uh, there was a decrease in part one and two offenses, which is always a good thing, uh, notably in areas of thefts and drug offenses. Uh, we did see an increase in part three, four, and five offenses in areas such as medicals, alarms, agency assists, domestic situations, and open garage doors observed by officers, this is primarily during the overnight hours, when officers, um, observe open garage doors, they try to contact with occupants, and, and open them to their open doors, and this is just part of our theft prevention efforts. Officers also responded to two hundred and twenty-five calls for service at our St. Francis Schools. Uh, in addition, officers performed one dollars of seven hundred and a lot of traffic stops, and issued three hundred and ninety-four citations, and their response time for both high priority and low priority calls, who pays them at five dollars. Uh, there is a TCD page in the report, those do some statewide statistics, and also, of course, numbers for the county, and St. Francis respectively, um, and really the focus of the remainder of the report is on additional highlights and services that the police department offers, along with the numerous events all throughout the year that couldn't be done, uh, without seven extra efforts put in by an amazing staff, so. Um, as always, I want to thank the City Council for your continued support, and look forward to another busy and productive, serious, uh, police department.
Very nice report, uh, it's, it's really, would be something if we could send these out to all residents, with their notes, after what the police department does, along with all the works that you'll see in the next report coming forward, um, but across that becomes a cost, and posters and stuff like that, I'm wondering if I, uh, Kevin, we had a point to begin a meeting, about talking at least a stall tomorrow, and we put a link on that in the spotlight window to link these, uh, two reports, because people should know what the effort is, and given the coverage we're asking for, I mean, this is a lot of work, uh, a lot of teamwork, um, is required too, by the way, in most public works, but, um, people just, you know, they want to smell pow, they don't know exactly what it takes to get a pow, there's a lot behind the scenes to get that machine out there running, uh, same with these and everything like that, so. So, uh, these calls for services, same way as the school, are they within line of when we had SRO there, or are they more than we thought?
Um. They're actually probably less, I mean, I'm sure more got reported through the SROs, um, just maybe not as called for service, but I, you know, the SRO was obviously more interactive on a daily basis with staff and students, um. But it's hard, it's hard to tell, I guess, I, without looking at some, some numbers.
But your feeling is that, you know, I mean, are we, are we, without SRO, are we working, are we, do we work for less, or are we in a situation where, well, they're helping us too, by the way, school districts will do it best.
I, I will say, I think most of the time they're calling us, they should be calling us. Um, the downside is, the calls that we spend, the calls that we respond to at the school are, are very time-consuming usually, that's one of the key benefits of the SRO, that they're already there, they have the time to spend on these, um, so they're very time-consuming, there's a lot involved with juvenile calls usually, anyway, get the parents and a lot of the things that just take a lot of time, so it does take our officers off the street, prove it's a long time usually, a lot of these calls, so.
Um, because you're talking about between old school district, two hundred and twenty-five call.
Well, the, the school in our city, there's a couple outside our city.
Right, that's what I'm looking at.
Yep, the four, the four.
Two hundred and twenty-five, so. Alright, I just, it is, you know, because I, I was always pro-SRO, I had pro-SRO, I think they should bring the SRO back, it's a shame you couldn't get it out, but I think I, because of what you just said, a lot of them, because they're on site, they're right there, you're catching things before they happen, that's a good thing, not that, that you roll in, you gotta start from the beginning, scratch, when they already got the, got the information already, your knowledge of it. Anyway, and also I want to ask you, by term of account, Mr. Council, um, you know, on this twenty-one to twenty-two year, is there, is there some pandemic influence, I mean, whether it was years over another, or just you got past that, you like talking about domestic violence and stuff like that, you guys, it's like, there were things after, than the first year of pandemic, or the year after, we saw increases of those type of things, people were more locked in their houses.
Yeah, I, I, I think we, police department, police department standpoint, I think, for sure last year we kind of lost some of that, um, influence with, with that, on our call, I had some, I think of that, so.
Cause I know the first year after, or that first year, there was a long cycle of stuff.
We should, yeah, well, like you said, a lot of it was stuck inside for a lot longer than a lot, a lot of it, I'm sure.
Kind of one of those things, right? Okay, thank you. Sarah, your comments?
Another excellent report, um, thank you officers and your staff, um, for all their hard work, I know how much work they put into the community events on top of whatever they're doing, so, I just want to know how much we appreciate them, encourage them, I know it gets tough some days to be out there and do it, um, but our community appreciates them, um, I hope they feel that when they're out there, um, I know some situations are pretty tough for them, so, um, I just want to hopefully continue some.
Great, Kevin, your comments?
Um, the kind of dovetail, Sarah, you guys have a more personal, in-depth relationship with our citizen rather than a sheriff, and not that they do a bad job, but they come and they go, and the reports are written, and they disappear, but I can see you guys at the store again, or another part of our, uh, community, so that's pretty cool. I also like reading the, um, weekly reports, you guys do a lot more education over citation, and that's nice, and I think people appreciate that as well, they, you cut a break, or, um, they were nice enough to you, so they may deserve a break, or give a break, so that's pretty cool. Um, I really enjoy reading the weekly reports, uh, it's, it's real, and it's raw, I mean, it's right there, I know that if we could see the real report, it'd be something, but it's pretty, uh, interesting what you guys tolerate and perform on a weekly basis. Um. Have you had any internal action, or any extra activity with the superintendent, had it become to you guys, have you had phone calls, any relationship there at all?
Not really yet, to be honest, I've had one conversation with the superintendent, um, when we first arrived, um, I've kind of presented to all the administration of the school, and we talked about, you know, what our expectations are, what they should expect, what you kind of hear from your, on that, um, but that is about the only conversation I've had from so far, so.
And you initiated, or he did, or?
Um, it's, I, I believe it's usually us that initiate, just the topic of, hey, let's do our annual meeting, by thing, let's get together, it's a good day, um, so I'm fairly comfortable with this.
Okay, can we, can you reach out to him again, just say hi, Gloria, it's, he showed up at a chamber conference once in the last, uh, two weeks ago, which out of the blue, he actually remembered my face, but didn't my name, but the fact that he showed up, a different part of the community, and I never saw the other superintendent anywhere, she was visible in other media, that's how it went, situation, but, it might help, but the school stuff also, some of the school stuff, but also, does the officer have to go into the court time as well, or does that, do they turn over to the attorney?
It, it can often be to that, sure, if they're, 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 well, uh, so, also, be subpoenaed for that, so, um.
Normally the SRO would have to do the court time, and then your guys are still on the street doing their job.
It's really a response answer, that is involved in that, that's it.
So again, an unseen burden on you guys, that, not burden, but unseen function that you have to do, and it takes away from somebody else that could be on the street, and we're supposed to have to travel and. Um. That's all I have, exceptional report, really visualized, like a lot, um, do you see domestic stuff, the, with, like the mayor said about COVID, you see a domestic stuff changing, but the intensity of the domestic calls changing at all, or better or worse?
I don't think anything that's noticeably consistent, you know, we have a handful of assaults every year that are pretty violent, uh, and, and we have a lot of them that are verbal, a lot of them that are, you know, child custody related, and just more arguments than actual physical confrontations, but, uh, we do see a, you know, consistently a handful of anger that are, are concerning, but nothing that, no noticeable rise in one of those type of incidents that I recall.
Alright, also in some neighborhoods, you see addresses that seem to have a pattern, do your officers focus extra time on some of those, and they're around, moving around some, I mean, various streets, which I won't mention, but we know what they are and where they are, for sure.
Yeah, um, yeah, we get to know some of our residents very well, and, uh, they do spend some extra time, for sure, if there's other things involved, such as restaurants, that, I don't know, just like that, uh, so yeah, they, they do, and they focus on certain areas when, when they focus on it.
Do you see any of the neighbors, or do you have any feedback, or with the daylight or nighttime, whenever, um, the neighbors want to see change, and, and encourage, um, want to see change, and talk to you guys about that kind of stuff, like get this crap out of here?
Oh, for sure, and they get frustrated with us, because of my picks, and they're right away, but we try to let them know there's a lot of different, um, you know, players in a game like that, when you're trying to, to fix a residential issue, um, so it's not, it doesn't always happen overnight, but we can tell them, you know, what we're doing, and what we're trying to do, and, um, eventually, you know, we hope they understand, and just, that you don't like the neighbor, it doesn't mean you can't express it really, so.
It's not that I like it so much, but they're causing crap, and there are other people who want to.
Yeah, there are many activities that you want, and things like that, like, you know, we usually, when we're involved in stuff like that, it's very, it's very visible, uh, we're very visible to the neighbors, so they, they do see us out there, they think, no, um, you know, we're working on it, uh, but again, some of them do get frustrated, just not necessarily take it out on us, but they just get frustrated with the system that can't be fixed, it's passable, not to be fixed, but.
Have you seen any of those neighbor, that, that, any of those areas softened since you've been in charge? When you concentrate as much on, and you can't make people move, you can't kick them out, but you can tell the police department, be a good neighbor?
Um, I have to think, but I, I want to say all of them, that we, that we.
Okay. Have you made any changes to change in it?
I think, yeah, for sure, when we, like I said, we, when there's areas that we need to focus on, um, you know, we're a small enough group that everybody knows what everybody did previous night or previous day, we read each other's reports, um, we talk, we email, so, um, we know if there needs to be extra attention, I don't give it a certain location, so, yeah.
Okay, well, thank you guys in the department, thank you very much.
Alright, uh, and you're finally gonna get back to full strength, so. Alright, Ken, I'm Robert, your comments?
Tom, great report, um, all Eric Olens, Sarah said, please tell your officers, thank you for the video, um, and support the community, um, one of the things that, that I was, drugs from twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two, um, basically kind of how, is that something you can kind of elaborate on, and a trend of.
Yeah, a lot of teenagers growing up, and there's not really that. And a lot of the drug activity we find is, is, you know, proactive on, on behalf of officers, so, one jury factor that could be that, we were short-handed, uh, we're down essentially three officers, I mean, two of the officers from the territory, so that takes a lot of your, I mean, your traffic stops out of the equation, and things like that, uh, because a lot of these drug arrests, uh, do, you know, come out of traffic, so it's proactive activity, so, that could be one factor in that, but, um, you know, the fact that I, I guess we, we did see a little less, um, come out of certain situations, we'll, we'll take that as a plus, and, um, okay, people are touring around, or avoiding our officers, which is always a good thing if they're doing, you know, and you don't want them to be doing, so, um, yeah, I don't know, um, but that, that's certainly could be one factor, just, just less patrol staff out there.
And my other question is, not to elaborate too much, uh, you know, I get concerned when, when there's community, you know, resignations, is there a, a change in, in heart, this wasn't for me, um, or is it in-house?
Just, yeah, that's always a concern of ours too, we, you know, we always look at ourselves first, and what can we do different, what are we doing wrong, um, but you know, the officers that left last year, um. One, I, I don't know. I don't know what his intentions were, to be honest with you, I don't know why he had applied with us, he wasn't long enough, he wasn't with us long enough to act like this, so.
Right.
I don't know, you know, and I, I don't know what he's doing now, I, he's one of the officers that I indicated that would leave the profession, so I'm not sure if he stuck to that for strange other reasons. Uh, another officer did leave us for a, for a more metro urban department, um, coming to find out about six months later, he actually hated it, which wouldn't have left, so we took that as a plus, um, and then of course Sergeant Allen, you know, uh.
Right.
So, all in all, I mean, you know, we, we've had a lot of officers pick with us for a few years, and, uh, the officers that we've had leave us, um, in the last few years. Um, I would say have, you know, there's a couple of them that did leave for more opportunity, bigger departments, um, but I do know one or two that was very, so, grass in the mountain.
I, I see that in my profession, there, I'm seeing a, a couple people come back that left, and, you know, and we're so short-staffed, you know, we kind of invite them back with open arms, like, you know, it's, you know, one's bird, you know, twice corn, type thing, so, yeah, whatever that saying is, but, um, great report, it looks good, I, I do like all the, the outreach stuff, the community stuff that we're doing, um, from the COVID cop to bicycle safety stuff, it, it really shows that the police department really has community first, and, uh, I, I would be wish that the school would get back on board with an SRO, I think our school-aged parents would appreciate that, so, we can continue, you know, somebody else can weekend for their budget for conversation, you know, so, I appreciate it.
No, and, and the community major address that you do, a lot of butter too, by the way, is our big stuff here, like I've always said through all my years here, you know, keeping us, not having people afraid to call the police, that's a good thing in small towns, especially in any town, but this town, um, it's nice to know that, your comments about we were glad the police were there, that we, people were told, that told them about shut the garage doors, stuff like, so things like that, those are big things, because those things are big things, so, um, we don't want people being afraid of our public safety, because public safety is two-thirds of our budget, uh, it's important, and, and Kevin I know is very adamant about services, and public safety can be put out there, um, and I think, uh, we're doing a good job, all over, especially public safety, really, really out there, and, uh, like I, like I say with Michelle, on the route, on up here in, like, um, that, uh, medical area, actually through the route, that's pretty scary, you got to pay, and that line. Anyways.
Thank you.
We're gonna move on to, uh, public works, because I know all of the conference officials are talking.
Mayor Council, uh, in front of you tonight is the twenty twenty-two Public Works annual report, I will pull out some, uh, some of the facts, statistics, and highlights from it, uh, we'll make it quick, thirty pages, if I read that, uh, yeah, we went, we're at four o'clock, so, I'll be there. Uh, some staff changes public works made this year, um, where Brian Reader retired, uh, we're brought back, if Brian retired from the department, he is the second one that's retired of public works to St. Francis, we're proud of that, uh, obviously the new public works director, uh.
Who was the first one?
The, Mark Snarson, Mark Snarson was the gentleman that I replaced, and then I became the public works director, so we had to hire two people this year, one for retirement and one for, and then the original that, that moved, that moved up. Uh, the two that were hired were Nate Hanson in the streets and parks department, and Wyatt Kennedy hired for the water wastewater department. A couple other changes we made this year were, uh, Jen Goverson is now full-time public works, and our new stormwater inspector, and Colin McDonough went through a three-day training, uh, the extensive training to become our new playground inspector. Our, uh, some of our highlights this year, some of the projects that public works accomplished were the Poppy Street reconstruction, as you know, Mayor, uh, hard not to miss that one, Mill and Overly on Roanoke, two thirty-ninth, and Xavier's Streets. The Mattree Street ditch project, the construction side with Park. The Mattree Street ditch project, the construction side park. The bottle shop and public works landscaping projects. And the construction of the bio cells pad and parking lot correction were done at public works. Our recycle program this year had four events and one hazardous waste event. There were a total of five hundred and thirty-nine vehicles that drove through, broke records from the previous years. The recycling staff constructed the enclosure for the trash recycling receptacle at community park, you drive by a few on forty-seven. You can look and see it as you drive by. The tonnage goal for twenty twenty-two was eight hundred and thirty-four tons. And they took in nine hundred and fifty-one tons, uh, so they broke his record. Tom, Tom kept done a wonderful job of this program, uh, his goal, the the Noka County goal is eight hundred and fifty tons next year. And Tom's goal is a thousand, he wants to, he wants to finally break a thousand. Uh, one of the things, uh, he's done just a fabulous job, one of the things that he's also trying to do is bring in. So we can get waste oil dropped off at public works as well, it's not on the program, it's, it's a. Manufacturing issue, so eventually we will get that there as well. Uh, the, some of the fun statistics now, because we are a statistic machine in public works, um, the streets and parks, uh. Crew spent about a thousand hours on equipment repair maintenance. And about four hundred and fifty hours of building maintenance. There were fifty-three total callouts, uh, outside of regular business hours. A hundred and ninety-two toll events in the parks, and something we've seen this year, the ice rink has. It it's been, the popularity is incredible, where I think I was told today that, uh, between forty and eighty and up to a hundred. Was not uncommon this year at the ice rink, it's drawn more people than it has at all in the past, so, uh, they've, uh. It's been an exceptional year to manage the ice rink and snow, the two don't mix, uh, because the streets come first and the ice rinks don't exactly. Yeah, if we did ice rinks first, we'd have a lot of unhappy people. So it's worked out pretty well, the guys have done a great job doing both, so. Uh, some wastewater and water highlights, in twenty twenty-two, the water wastewater department changed their summer hours to four nines and a four. Versus the four tens that they were, were working, it worked out very well because it resulted in better coverage for our customers and the contractors that needed. You know, parts in the busy season, so it worked out very well, and the. The the four gentlemen actually are enjoying the the different elements, so we have a little better coverage, uh. The wastewater staff graciously volunteered to be the city of vessels operators for their, for their bond system. They are currently preparing Vettel to become independent again, the update on that is they have hired an operator and we are working toward Vettel's independence. So it's going along very well, and we've spent minimal time over it, um. Staff completed an asset management inspection for district two last year and used the team's RTA, RTK locator. With GPS capability to enter all assets into software program called Diamond Maps. This effort was led by John Mackey with the help of Mike Harris. The city of St. Francis now has locations of all curb stops, gate valves and manholes. In district two, within an inch of their real world location. John and Mike have, will have all assets in the city located by this time next year. The best part of that program is it's eight hundred and eighty-eight dollars a year, web based. And we can have unlimited users in for staff in the city. Works, been working extremely well, I have to give a shout out. Yes, yeah, and and John Mackey has has headed this, uh, we just had a a staff, um. Just a short, uh, session showing everyone, you know, what it's capable of, um, I have to give a shout out for him, uses that, used RTK at Columbia Heights. And now that he's integrating us with these diamond maps, um, it's quite unbelievable, if you can imagine trying to find a curb stop. This big, underneath a snowbank in the boulevard, it's impossible. These guys would have to dig before pickaxe and do whatever they had to, and then use a metal locator. With the new locator, they don't have to do that, it will bring them right to it, it's, it'll walk it right up, right up to where the, the actual valve is at.
Especially if you got a leak.
Correct. Uh, one thing I wanted to mention, uh, going into one, on one of my off weeks last year, going into this winter. Uh, we're in moderate drought, and I I want the council to be aware that just because we're getting all this snow doesn't mean we're going to come out of this winter. Uh, without being in the drought, so that's something we'll keep an eye on and we'll continue to monitor that until the council and as we move forward, um. This, uh, in April of this twenty twenty-two, the city was selected for sampling for PFOs by the Department of Health. And results came back in October and showed that we don't have any in our sample, and that's a very, very good thing. This year, thirty-eight operator hours were dedicated to pump holes for cleaning, although it's down from forty-eight last year. We are thinking that the Doppa lift station isn't such a bad idea.
Good idea, right?
Not such a bad idea at this point. Uh, I'm going to end with some snowplowing statistics this year, uh, it probably won't reflect so much in the, um. In the hours, uh, uh, work, because I've got to hand it to German Parish, they are amazing at. Uh, diversifying under pressure, uh, most of the snowfalls this year, believe it or not, have been during the business week. So as far as overtime, uh, these men have sidestepped that, and it's been incredible what they've been able to do. Uh, they worked a lot of midnight to eight shifts this year, uh, and they've done a very, 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 very good job at it. Uh, public works plowed almost eighteen hundred miles of roads, five hundred miles of trails. We've put down seventy thousand pounds of granite chips on our gravel roads. One point three million pounds of salt were applied to our asphalt roads. We have incurred over twenty-five thousand dollars in repairs because of the nasty snow conditions this year, last year. Uh, all public works equipment is repaired and back in the garage, and I wanted to end with a figure tonight. We as a city spent approximately sixty-five hundred dollars per average snowplow, plowing three to six inches of snow. Any more than that, it goes up, and and needless, it doesn't matter, do you still worry?
That's, that's all applause on one event.
One event, all plows, all staff, it's one event. Correct. I would like to personally thank the city council and staff for the continued support for public work for the public works department. I would also like to thank my staff in public works, because without them and their talents and perseverance, we would not be where we are today. With that, I would be happy to answer any questions.
That's a very good report, I'm going to have a recent survey run out to one. One thing to look outside, see a road plowed, because I think you realize how much it takes to take that road plowed. And we should appreciate that, pretty much like various services, whatever, um, one question I have for you. Um, are people still blowing snow or out for roads?
Yeah, wait, then, yeah, they'll do, it's it's actually, since I had the great pleasure of plow St. Francis for three seasons. Seen just about everything, uh, yes, they plow across the road, blow snow on the road.
And and are they doing it because they have no place to put themselves in hours that every year do?
In my opinion, Mayor, with, and Council, with, with a snowblower, you don't have any excuses, snowblowers will blow over the top of hills. I don't think there's any excuse to go to a snowblower, why would you want to blow it out the road, even direct it into your yard? Um, as far as plowing across the street, there's no excuse for that, and it makes, it creates a dangerous condition, and it it's clearly seen in our instances that you can't do that.
So are you, are you sending out letters to these areas and all that?
We have.
Yeah, because putting it on the road, I mean, you got to push it someplace else, and that, and see what's going up, I mean. But we could go ahead, took the road and ride over to Seale Park and Butterfield, and I was just seeing what's going on in those areas, and to a short drive. And amazing how much snow comes up on roads. Within their maintenance, I mean, so you can offside roads, you're losing almost a third to half of the lane, there's no place for the snow. Only alternative would be to to, uh, to take it off site, which would be costly and effective, I'm not going to do that. And I would say that some cities are doing that, um, but my point is that, uh, this, this is a hard one. You got no place to put it, uh, hopefully the Dolphins have a little bit of all that, you know, pretty much all players. But good job here too, um, I want to, I want to thank staff. And council, uh, mostly, I want to thank them for the equipment changes we made in seventeen, those were big deals we did, we got equipment. It's one thing, we don't have ten van trucks, we don't have ten, uh, western starts, what we have is two, one of each. In the greater and in front of lower, we have two, uh, uh, two cats and one skid loader. But anyway, my point is, um, take care of machines really well. Um, but there are, and we're smaller, 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 we're still a fence length this in the future, which will take their, their toll on these machines. So, tough to call and, uh. I'm putting a contingency fund together, planning on that in the future, for smaller and bigger ones. Also, I don't dig into our budgets, I want to put that money in place, ready to use, to dig into budgets. And if you're going to be digging a budget, you have to show the boss, and then, more in parks or something like that, you can't do that, so. But if anything, the season's tough, says, these machines, as good as they are, are susceptible to wear and tear. And these snowpads, these aren't any snowpads. But your crew has done, has done a great job, right in state, running your water treatment, your wastewater, everything, good job.
Great report, tell your, tell you guys, thanks for all that you do, it's crazy there, we're still, we have. I know you're holding personally, council, and getting another, snow emergency, probably, we won't snow anymore this year, um. But I've seen a a little bit of an improvement on, uh, for the residents, a little bit of improvement on, uh, fire hydrants, but still. Uh, get out and show around your fire hydrant, because right now with the rain pouring over the, all the snow that. Is still covering, uh, fire hydrants, it's going to be like a brick, um, and when you need emergency services. Um, they need to get to the fire hydrant, so please get out and clean your fire hydrants. But report is great, your guys are doing an awesome job, might be on, I'm probably believing. I still have to blow my own driveway, you know, I may with the truck all the time, I come around my cul-de-sac, a point might drive me, but. They don't stop, so, um. I do something that I don't know what a lot of people do, but, um. I blow my half of the driveway on the, on the north side into my yard. And residents, if you clean your half of the street on the north side where the plow comes in, by the time the plow gets to your driveway, it's empty. So you'll have a two and a half foot mound in your driveway, but please don't blow it in the street, blow it in your yard, I got. I got a five foot mound on my side, but I get out into the street. Twenty, twenty, thirty feet north of my driveway, I never have to go back and and hit the end of my driveway. It's awesome, so, something to think about when you're already out there, snow blowing is, you know, works harder and harder.
This year, we only have these big chunks of snow.
Oh, yeah. You got to beat the snowplow out there, because it's not, and then it's all just jumbled up, and if it's still just fresh snow right on the track, being on the driveway, it's the same thing. On the street, so, and I live on a cul-de-sac, so. There's a lot of, there's no place to put the snow, and when on the cul-de-sac, it's just a lot of snow, but. Thank them for the hard work that they've done and the, and the flexibility that they do in their hours, it's great to see.
Sharon?
Thank you, great report, um, always, always good to kind of recap the year and see, um, the differences from year to year. Um, I think we've made some great changes in public works, um, and I look forward to working with you anymore, so. Parks is, is exciting for me, um, do you have many people who follow you about the stories at intersections, or do they just fuck up some members? The, the, the visibility at intersections. Do you get any follow-up on that?
Uh, we haven't had much of that so far, I know Todd, uh, contacted Minda for the main intersections on forty-seven. And they were actually, I think, the very next day, the next morning, um, so that helped a lot, uh, but we haven't heard, it's been mum from the, the, the. Residents, I haven't heard much from residents in general streets.
Um, great report overall, again, you do a lot of credit to your guys, instead of just you, it's pretty awesome. It's a good team that you have together, and again, is your anniversary next month, a year, or was it this month, um, no?
Uh, no, I, uh, I actually, it'll be, uh, Memorial, so. Very, very great, yes.
No, I, I, no, you're, it's a good, it's awesome, um, recycling is near, near my heart, it's awesome to see the. Numbers go up and people, and I've worked several of them, and seen the people coming through, what they're bringing, and it's not ending up in our digits or. Causing our neighbors grief and whatnot, and people seem genuinely enthusiastic when they come in and take here, but I know. Someone puts out a pocket on their apartment, they're getting rid of it, and they're happy to get rid of it. Um, I'm looking forward to seeing an oil bill at our own place, uh, might want to put a camera there, and they'll grow one, looks pretty nasty, time to time. Like a bachelor party one on there, but, uh. Um, uh, targeting snow ledgers, how are you doing that this year? Are you targeting the actual addresses or?
Yeah, yeah, if, 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 if the guys have a specific address that their request gets, we'll target an address. Specifically, not, not an entire neighborhood, because situations like pushing across the road are. Um, I don't know, I wonder how Todd put it, there's, we know those residents pretty well.
Yeah, there's a statute for it, and I think there was, Todd mentioned before, and I've seen it in my own neighborhood, number one. Man, you know, and I do the best, I'm hoping your guys see my hair tracks, and I'm doing my best to make sure I get it in there, and I'm not getting busted, but, uh. Uh, I don't want to get an astrium, so, no, overall, it's, and again, this report, the pictures and whatnot, visual is a big deal, and if our public, like Mayor said. Can get exposed to this, it's, it means a lot, even if fifty percent of them take a peek at it, you know, they see their, their money's well spent, the people who work here really care, so, good job.
Alright, thank you, I would also say that, uh, you say call, that's because you brought all back here to our city. Or there's another area, and all that, it's all here, funded, and I think that's a great idea.
Can I ask one more question?
Um, the vessel training, we're being compensated for that, correct, it's not just gratis here, it's part of our original agreement, hourly situation, and.
That's correct.
And it's not, uh, taking any time away from our own duties or your own duties.
No, not at all.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Mayor.
Alright, and, uh, like I say again, with the equipment that this council approved back seventeen, that's a big deal, the main thing about making those plow efficient, the vessel. Safety is my number one concern here, the police, fire, and public works, all are bad, are people, that's why I push for two office, three sixty-five to come to our city. So when the weather's a factor, or pandemic is a factor, wherever, people will stay at home, be safe, so get the job done, and do it the right way, so. Technology will help us, you should utilize it, I think this, this council will establish flexible, understand that. Has that, that locator with that, that cloud-based software, that's a big deal. How you're mapping out areas with mine, well, it's, it's hard enough to find something in a wall through a sheet rock, it's pretty rough to find something in the ground. We're going to inch your sand?
With an inch, accurate with an inch.
If you're doing enough, big enough hole, we're inching it behind. Alright, thank you all so very much, we're going on tonight, the council member reports, let's start with Sarah.
I attended the charter commission meeting on January, I think. We do have two vacant seats, and we did also briefly talk about, um. Some ways that we can maybe, um. Showcase some of our commissions at different events, so people know what they are, what any details, when meetings are. If there's any compensation, if there's not, um, just things that maybe can help draw some people who are interested. Um, and I did also attend, um, the chamber meeting one night, I want to thank Colette and Joey for their. Their work with that, um, it was really fun, right, well attended, um. I, I look forward to it, it's my first year going, I definitely will go back to it, because other people here don't, they go as well, um, and then I just want to. Let residents know that with primary days coming up, there will be multiple volunteer, um, opportunities, so. Um, if you want this to grow, if you want it to continue, if you want your input, um, there will be plenty of opportunities for you to do so, so. Um, great job, chair of the chamber, we got the meeting, um, I'll get you.
Um, I attended the primary adjournment meeting, uh, two weeks ago, and it was interesting to see the, the, uh. I didn't have a look at the seating, there's a lot of people here, and like, oh my gosh, you never would think, why, what's the big deal? Um, the individual, the African had, uh, two, two or two different neighbors that were against it, and everybody else here was. Said he was a good neighbor, a good soul, and a good guy, and, and then the, the African stood up well, so it was interesting to see how the. Tide turned that night, and it was like, okay, things were brought up that weren't relevant to what the application was about, and. We were talking about, or they were talking about people that have searched our country and traffic and little kids and playground and players, it's a, it's a busy road. It's a busy road, it, it, it's an established neighborhood, it's been busy and had issues, accidents, issues and stuff, but it's not because of this individual or the African. It was. Other things and surrounding things that just didn't pertain to what we're looking at, but it's interesting seeing neighbors stand up for neighbors. And uh, again, the city always has the, the final call, what's gonna go on, so. And people were respectful and, and they respected one another and there was no hubbub afterwards, so and the, the. There's only one side represented that night, which was interesting, but uh, that was cool. Um, I attended the building meeting, we're in the process of, uh. Taking, we put out bids for a contract manager individual to put the bids out with the project itself and, um. Bring it all together and then see, you know, work and see if we can hit our targeted amount again as promised to our constituents. Um, so that, that we'll be seeing more on that. Um. I also attend the fire meeting. Uh, the neighborhood nearest to Bethel has uh, some concerns about the. Response in time and serving their neighbors and their, their citizens properly, so. We are meeting with possibly, uh, whether it's a J K or joint services or an agreement to work with them or for them, or it's yet to be seen. Uh, but it's cordial and it's um, informative. Um, we'd like to see it go a little faster. We know what the players are, what the players need and. Players meeting in St. Francis and Bethel. And I just wanna say that their fire team is very passionate about their job. And uh, concerned about the citizens, so that's coming along. Um, I wanna give Johnson credit. Uh, the fireworks went up five thousand dollars. Tended to help, so the wish store does, I end up with that, so. Uh, thank you very much for that. The place is wonderful. I've uh, seen, I've been in there twice in the last about four weeks. And everybody is happy and the place is spotless and shiny and bright and cool, so. Who knows to you, you didn't get any of the reports of your own night, but I'll, I'll give you an ad away and add a crew. They did a good job, so. Um, I also attended the chamber function. A lot of enthusiasm. Uh, they had to put up two more tables for the people that came there. Again, just like the prior Pioneer Days, um, the show's been a good job bringing, breathing some life back into something that was kind of inflated and kinda, kinda sad and sulky, so. We're hoping for, you know, if the city does well, everybody does well, so it's good to see that and, um. That's all I have.
I really don't have anything for, to report, having uh, down and out for a while for the last couple of weeks, but uh. I just wanna uh, thank all the department heads and, and staff for doing a great job managing their, um, employees and them being. Flexible from top to bottom, so I just wanna thank everybody, um, staff wise. John, thank you. Uh, I went to the liquor store, not myself personally, but, um. My money went to the liquor store and uh, found something that I couldn't find in any other store. Um, that was relatively new, so that was really, uh. Heartwarming to come to the liquor store and find something I couldn't find in any other store that was pretty new, so. Um, keep up the great, keep up the great, I know, I know. I'm supporting the liquor store around the city. Um, I'm doing my part, so, thanks.
Thank you. That's it. I also wanna say, you know, I've, I've, I've seen a difference in the liquor store. It looks different, by the way. I got, I'm taking the shrubs down, you know, I'm particularly cleaning up on that place up, it's a beauty. I never thought, I thought I'd trim it up, but that cost in the shuffle of construction, but if you take the way you're taking, you actually see the building. Which is really nice, so. Still working with clever, as Dave well knows, um. Have not heard a word from them since you gave them the extra money, everybody. Everybody here, just wanna say to you that I haven't been accomplishing anything. That's a sad thing. I also wanna say on record here that there's a difference between a low, big company and a low quality company, okay? And I think the difference is, I don't think everybody's. The, the street company that did Poppy Street was a low bid company, but did a great job. They were quality, okay? The difference between the company we hired, and this is something we'll not make a mistake again, ever. But we not only got a low bid company, we got a low quality company. There's a difference. And, and for people at this council, this staff here. We don't deal with people like that. I, I don't, I don't, I'm not, I'm a man of my word. I keep my word. That's, that's your count on my word, but I don't deal with companies like this. Uh, you know, David, David talked about this many, many times. Uh, and so there's a big difference between once you get a low bid companies and low quality companies. And so when you get a company like the street company that Poppy which was, what was the company's name? On, on. Yeah, oh, you got a spot there, didn't you? Was it Anderson something or Cosworth? Douglas Curry, Douglas Curry. They're only a low bid company. They've done their jobs, of course, they're quality. That's, that's a big difference, so. If, if anything, if we hadn't learned a lesson, I would rather have learned it on the, uh, on the liquor mini. And we can learn on the city fire station, because it's a bigger pressure, of course, and we can't afford to just hear and stick on any budget, but surely about that, so. It's just as sad that we had a push run with that. Um, we got past it and the store's doing well. I'm always very happy to hear that your customer base is expanding along with the company, or sales of that. Uh, I never, I never had doubt in it, um, because we are going to show in town, which does help. Uh, but still, if you're pouring it out, which is really good, and you change it with the times and the bad, it's fair. Way to say that, say that, period, that you change it with the times, but your store, fresh and up there, it's noticeable and. I drive by that parking lot, I see, I see it busy and that's good, it's really good, so. I really did the right thing there. Sorry to the rest of the company you did. Hope it is gonna work soon. Later, but uh, doesn't affect the business all the way up, but it was built. Powers are affected when we're building, built as a little, so we have, we have basically. Two buildings in this city. They were built out of beams, where they were, they were built for the used part, out of the community, the water act, used part of course, that's it. Hopefully the city fire station will be, gonna change it, last good change in city as a team. I wanna thank everybody here, staff, council, uh, for being flexible with my health issues right now. I'm working as hard as I can, trying to stay as strong as I can. Um. Just wanna thank everybody for, for being supportive and, uh, understanding what we're experiencing. Hopefully the times will be better for us as time goes on. Um. Thought it was not in my control if somebody is in the fight for that part, must I care? So thank you very much. Appreciate that. On that, any good business at all? Okay, then I'm ready. I'm gonna triple speed seven fifty five on Monday, February sixth. Thank you very much.